Call to order, the City of Columbia City Council for April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. As you can see, the mayor couldn't be here tonight, so he's stuck with me. We'll have the invocation by Dan Davis and then Jeremy, lead us in the flag.
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties, help them to do right, to do fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Dan, would you do the roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Tilio?
Here.
Diener?
Here.
Noel? Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Y'all have a copy of the council minutes for April fourth? Is there any additions or corrections? If not, they'll stand approved as submitted. Reading of communications, we have a letter from Jeff Stoy. Jeff Stoy, Mr. Willard, please accept this formal letter of my, as my official application for the open position of the City of Council Planning Commission. I believe my experience and qualifications in the construction industry will allow me to contribute to the planning commission in efforts to keep Columbia moving forward for the betterment of the community. I've lived in Columbia for the majority of my life and have had the opportunity to build several commercial construction projects, countless hours of community service for projects to benefit all. I would be honored with the opportunity to further discuss my qualifications for the appointment at your convenience. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jeffrey P. Stoy will, will take action on this later. You received a copy of the Park Recreation Cemetery Committee meeting, April, or March twenty-seventh. Any corrections or additions to that? If not, they'll stand approved as submitted. You have minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes? And they will stand approved as submitted. Recognition of persons appearing to appear. Jacob Civic of the American Legion to discuss twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three Memorial Day Parade and the twenty twenty-three Street Fair.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for tomorrow, the weather improves, right? Um, as you know, it's that time of year. Got our request in to hold Memorial Day Parade, uh, Monday, May twenty-ninth. Parade will follow the usual route, beginning at, lining up at nine-thirty, starting at ten, and approximately two hours between the parade and the service in the cemetery. Then the big one, the one hundred thirty-sixth Columbia Street Fair to be held on September seventh, eighth, and ninth this year. Clo, there's closures are listed there. There's a second sheet with the list of the closures for easy reference. With the big one being the closure of all of Maine, all of South Maine on Wednesday, the sixth at noon for the beginning of the tent setup, allow electricians, water departments, other city workers to get their things out without interruption and get, and be able to clear the streets safely. Also to put up the, um, banner across North Main. And permission to hold the parade on Thursday evening, September seventh at approximately six fifteen P. M. Permission to use the lots in the park for both staging for the parade and throughout the weekend for parking for the, uh, the fair, not to interfere if there's harm in this year. And finally, a waiver to any fees for the fair, hanging banner, or any concession fees that may be incurred outside of that being. And that's it. And then also, side note is, Dr. Lance, and I was just talking to the chief, we are planning on doing a tabletop here at the early part of the summer for fairness or any type of emergencies that may or may not occur.
Where is that gonna be held?
I'd be here.
Do we hear a motion?
I move that we accept the, uh, the events as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any questions? Deanne, if you would, please.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Diener?
Yes.
Jake, thanks for, uh, being, uh, you know, so professional and coming up here regardless of whether we know that that has been the same, ditto, carbon copy for years and, and hopefully we-
He's got it memorized now.
And hopefully we can keep it up for another hundred. So thank you.
And the thing is, is people always wonder like, well, how do you get, how do you get this or that? I'm like, I asked. So the answer's always no.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, let's, uh, turn to the city manager's report. Lance?
Thank you, Skip. Okay, uh, start out with some amazing news. The O E M A, that's, um, called and said that the stormwater application that was submitted in January for the Court Street and Herbster neighborhood is going to be funded at seventy-five percent. Uh, the project was estimated about one point three million. And, uh, they're teaming up with the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for, to, to do this project. So that's, that's huge for us. Uh, we just announced last year that we were gonna be doing the Beverly Ray Project and the Oaks Wilding Project that heads north. This is north of all that, um, Oaks Wilding, to clear up at the intersection of, uh, Court and Herbster. And if you, I think I put a, a, a map in your, uh, in your packet, so you can kind of get an idea of that one. We're not, we're not as familiar with that one as we were. We're the, the top three. So, uh, that was, uh, priority number eight. And the reason that eight made it and maybe some other ones didn't is because the, the grant application is very particular on what types of, um, you know, calculations you can do to, you know, model this. And out of our top ten, there are only, there are only a few that these calculations can be created using this method. So that's why we jumped up to number eight, the, and put that one in. That was a, it was, um, it was a big, big project, a big application to fill out, and we're very excited to, uh, start with that. I'm not, you know, I'm not exactly sure when we're gonna start, um, on the actual project, but we did, um, advertise it in, for public comments, uh, today, or, yeah, I think today, the paper, either yesterday or today. So, um, that's a thirty-day, uh, public, public comments period, which we didn't get any on the other three projects that we've already done. So that's, uh, four major projects, stormwater projects that, uh, we've gotten through this process. So we're very, very excited about that. Uh, the entrepreneur class, uh, that we've been talking about, the, you know, we have a new, um, basically, it's, it's for presentation for Columbia Plaza Parking Lot. And students did that probably in October, November, we saw the first one. We've seen a couple since then, but on Friday, the school, state school board superintendent actually came, visited, uh, the high school, and the students did a wonderful job presenting that. And then today, we went over to Carnegie P. A. We went to their, um, village hall there. And the students, uh, both the eighth grade and the, um, high school entrepreneur class went, and they presented, they did a wonderful job. There were eight other communities in attendance from the Carnegie area. So, um, we were very excited about that, and the students did a wonderful job. And it was, started around ten, and we were done around eleven-thirty. And, uh, just really appreciate the opportunity, and they, they, uh, they did good, and they did really, really well. They, they did as good as college students do.
That statement was actually made by somebody there.
So, uh, it was, it was really nice to see the other, uh, communities. They all set, uh, representatives, you know, maybe, you know, either village managers or city managers, or, you know, somebody from their community to, uh, see what we're doing over here. Few of them were excited. They actually wanted them to come to the area schools. So, uh, they do a great job, and it's, it, and it shows, and, uh, Trish Misos has, uh, has them wa, very well trained. And, uh, Stephanie Baylor's class did a, basically, it's a recycling program where they take bottle caps, and they collect all these bottle caps, and then they're gonna drive them to, I think it's Indiana, and they're gonna come back with a park bench. And the eighth graders represented us very well today, too. So it's very cool to see them, and actually, they've, uh, they had, they'd come to one of the, uh, chamber meetings, and, and that's when Skip and I asked them to come along. So, uh, they got to hang out with the high schoolers today, and they, they did a great job. So it was a, it was a long day. We just, uh, got back, uh, late, uh, this afternoon. So, but it was a, it was a very good day. Uh, we did, um, we got a call from Congressman Johnson to say that our lakefront lift station project has made it basically through the first hurdle. And we'll stay in contact with them and see, you know, follow it through the next stages of the process. So, uh, I think, as he said, you know, to, to hit a single, you have to be at bat. We're at bat. So that's, that's, uh, what he called to tell us to say, or tell us, you know, where, where we're at in that process. So I think we'll probably find something out later in the fall. I don't know the exact timeline, but, um, we really appreciate, uh, that, uh, being part of that process. Uh, let's see. Our office staff continue to be trained on that new accounting payroll software. We've been working on a, a grant application, ODOT grant application. Basically, we're trying to widen part of Route fourteen. And it is a special grant application period that just opened up with a pretty tight timeline. And, uh, we met that, uh, timeline with the help of House and Baird on Friday. And ODOT called us, and we are doing a presentation for them virtually in, in May. So we hope, we hope to do well with that. It's a small section of, um, of Route fourteen. Basically, it's kind of like, say, we'll say from Best Western all the way up to the bridge, what we're proposing. And this, this, this special grant opportunity was, uh, basically focused to reduce congestion. And this is part of the Small Cities Grant Opportunity. And, uh, we're one, one of fifty-six communities that can even do this in this, in this, I guess, in the state, I guess. So we're gonna be competing on, on, uh, in May for, for them. Uh, Nicole Ice and Josh Manning are filming a sci-fi movie. They made the paper this week, so if you saw them on top of the theater today, but they were filming up there. Uh, they've been over in Leetonia, they've been over, or Park, and on South Main Street, um, North Main Street. And, uh, you know, it's kind of cool to have them in, in town. Moving on to the departments, we have fifty-nine that locate, so any, you know, we have a great big, uh, gas, gas project going through. So anytime they come through, we have to, they mark all the utilities. So we had fifty-nine of them in the last two weeks. So, and that's, every department has to do that. We've erased three fire hydrants. Uh, we're getting ready to haul lime out of the lagoons. Uh, down its wastewater park, uh, department, we did, uh, hire an operator. Uh, we also cleaned the E Q after, uh, at the rain event. Park and Cemetery, uh, pool, pool filters have been delivered, and the demolition of the old ones, uh, took place last week. And the new pool filters, uh, Tim actually sent me a picture of them. They, uh, you know, in order to get the stuff out and in, the, uh, our crews widened the, the doorways. Not sure how they got them down in there the first time around, but, uh, had to wi, widen the doorways to get, uh, the things in and out in one piece. Uh, electric department, uh, still clean, they cleaned up the lines and put, put some lines back up from the storm, the second storm since the last meeting. And during that sanitary sewer project, uh, that assessment project that we just did, so like along fourteen, and then we have, uh, the north substation. Well, a part of that spur came up right next to our lift station. So our electric department, we're sweating bullets, uh, through that. They, we have a, uh, a major line that runs near there, so they had to spot it. And then, uh, they did get past it, and, uh, it's, it's all in. So the wastewater project is pretty much finishing up. We've got a few things to button up, but, uh, you know, some grass and some reseeding and, and regreting, I should say. So, uh, it's a pretty good project. Uh, I know they would have hoped for a quarter February, but that didn't happen, so no money. Skip, that's, uh, I believe that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Y'all received the EMS department report for March two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions on that? You received the mayor's court report from March two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions on that report? You received the bill list for four eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any questions on the bill list? Now we have old business, uh, like a motion to read these ordinance by title only.
So I move.
Second.
Any questions? Deanne?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Diener?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash thirty-one seventy-four, second reading. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for Annual Contract zero one eight dash zero two four for sodium chloride rock salt.
So I move.
Second.
We have motion, second. Any questions? Deanne, if you would, please.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Diener?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three-one seven-five, second reading. An ordinance amending section four dot seven C, one and two of the Polices Procedures Manual of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
I move.
Second.
We have motion, second. Any questions? Deanne?
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Diener?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Under new business, I would like to have a motion to appoint the applicant, Jeff Stoy, to the opening planning, uh, commission seat, expiring term, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
That was pretty positive.
Yeah.
I don't suppose there's any questions with all that, right? Deanne, if you would, please.
Tilio?
Yes.
Diener?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Uh, Lance, uh, with Rick Vaughn, do you still want to talk about the solar stuff, or do you want to hold that off?
Yeah, so, um, I think, I can, I think we can have an initial conversation if you'd like, if you're prepared to do that. I don't think Rick would mind.
Okay, does that work for, does that work for council? Talk about this now? All right, let's go.
Motion to do it?
Don't think we need a motion, do we? No. I got the head nod, just nothing.
You know, with the, just the increase of the number of solar panels coming down the bike, we thought it would be prudent to get ahead of it. And we've had, we've had the solar, uh, rate for, I think, almost, at least since two thousand and fourteen. So, um, you know, we've been doing that aspect of it for a while, but, uh, as they get, you know, more and more prevalent, we just wanna, you know, make sure that, you know, we learn from other communities, uh, on, on how to regulate, you know, where you put them and such, so. So this, um, Mark, this would be a whole new section, just like-
This would, um, and the intent behind this is basically more of a zone focus than anything else. We can do whatever council wants, obviously, but what I looked at was other communities throughout Ohio that had solar panel regulation. A lot of things that I tend to look at, you can see anything you want as far as how they're ready to like it. From one paragraph to, you know, pages and pages that go into the most minute detail. So what I tried to do was look at this and look at the idea of limiting where they are on a property, providing that we're not wanting to have them as a sole use on any property, that they're going to be accessory. You know, normally you look at, they can be roof mounted or ground mounted. We try to put some limitation on roof mountings, that we don't have panels just hanging out over a roof, that they really wouldn't look, um, they wouldn't improve upon anybody else's property, and they wouldn't look like some, some appendage to a building that really doesn't fit. Um, if they were ground mounted, we looked at the idea, we don't really think it's a great idea to put them in the front yard, so maybe the rear yard. And then you can look at, do you want more, um, separation from the neighbors? Do you want some type of landscaping around it? And not only did we look at what it would cover, but not applicability, so that if you've got solar lights as landscaping, we're not regulating those, and, uh, oh, no, well, that's the idea. Say, those systems were not regulated, and that's part of the structure, and much looking at that as an accessory use. And then the idea of permitting them, so that we know what's going in. Kind of like a permit for short-term rentals. Part of the idea of permitting is so that we know what's happening. We've already done that with mobile vendors, move trucks. So you don't necessarily want to feed this absolutely, um, you know, prohibitory, but you want to know that, want to know where they are going. The only danger with, the more we put on our planning and zoning inspector, every wonderful idea that I come up with, it seems like whoever's sitting there is going to have even more inspection responsibility. Final thing we looked at was decommission. If you're gonna take them out, you're not just gonna leave a bunch of glass panels sitting, you're actually going to leave them. So that's it, and that's show.
I've got two questions. One I questioned, and I'm not sure why I questioned it, but let's try it out. It's, uh, it's the third page, it's I, location, two, C. Roof-mounted solar energy systems shall not be located on the front elevation or on any elevation facing within ninety degrees of the front. Does that mean that we can only put it on the back of the building?
That's, and I copied this from another community, that's exactly what that means. So, you know, like I said, you can regulate them as much as you want. If we're not concerned, you know, one of the concerns I looked at was, we don't want anybody that is besides somebody that decides to put solar energy systems up, looking at it like it's a nuisance. And frankly, it is a nuisance. Um, so, you know, some of this, some of the ordinance that I looked at really were very circus-like. For example, it's kind of more middle of the road, but you're right, so that's exactly what it says.
So if the back of this building is facing north, it's gonna be kind of a worthless panel.
Right. Well, unless you very often put it in the back of the yard, and then run wiring to the, to the building, because it doesn't have to be right next to the building.
Well, this says, this one says, actually says roof mounted.
Roof mounted.
Oh, roof mounted, yeah, okay.
So you're right, and, you know, when I read that, actually, when I put that in, I thought, oh, if it is going to pick up, that means that we could think somebody's idea completely worked. You know, part of the idea of regulating is, you know, this discussion is so that if all of you can decide, okay, how much do you want to respect? My concern is no restriction will save in front yard.
Oh, yes.
Because some installers are gonna think that's a great place to put it, and then somebody's gonna think, why not? So once you start saying, okay, no front yard, rear yard, roof, you're right, do you want to limit the direction?
I, I think limiting, I think limiting the direction like this would, I mean, it would, anyone who's got a south-facing house is losing the most effective part of their roof. Um, you know, I, my house is north-facing, and with these restrictions, I would still be down to about a third of my roof because of the way my roof is designed. So I, I think that particular one is probably not a great choice for us.
Yeah, I, I know a couple people who already have panels mounted on the, uh, south side of the building, but you know, uh, one over, close to, over on, uh, Terrapin, just like that.
Actually, that's a great point. Do we need to put any language in here for existing?
Well, if it's already there, you know, you can't regulate if it's already there. That's probably what's called an ex post act, a law, a constitutional law. We can't put language in, it basically says, anything that is already in existence, either is, you know, grandfathered, or however you want to put it.
I was thinking, like, in terms of replacement.
That if it's replaced, it has to comply.
That was one thought, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I don't, again, I don't, that's the thought I have, is we could put something in for replacement, if it's, if it's something that's in the front yard, which would be the biggest issue, I would think.
I don't know that we have any in the front yard right now. Um, one of the things Lance and I talked about was, before somebody does, we need to get something in front of you to think about.
Do we, do we actually want to throw this one out altogether? And I'm, I, I have no feeling, I just want where the other, because I don't know. Do we actually want to throw this whole thing out, or do we just want to say something about the front elevation?
Well, defined elevation, I guess, there then, because I, I mean, I, I agree with you, we don't want to stick them on the front of the house, like on a vertical wall, but if we're talking about the roof, I guess with, the definition of the word comes, where that comes in.
You can, you know, we can define what the roof is and say that's, you know, the roof is not including certain parts of the front elevation if you want. You can make it as restrictive as you want, um, because we're not dealing with a lot of people that have it. You can't prohibit it, I suppose, but, you know, like, like.
I just, I just hate to rule that whole section out.
I agree with you, because it, I mean, solar energy in northeastern Ohio is not the most efficient place to have it anyway. And when you start, when you start eliminating big chunks of the roof, which is where most people are going to put it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into that. I'm not sure that, that, um, you know, when you're building a house, they talk about elevations. So, you know, there's the, the base package, the next package, and the next pa- package, and it's, and, and they're usually protruding out this way, you know, like it says ninety degrees, so we, we can look into that one.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would be okay with, with it, as long as it excludes the roof, that would be fine. You know, excludes restricting it, obviously. That way, someone's a, packing solar panels under the front of the house, is a, a sunshade or something over a window, that would be, I wouldn't want to see that. But the roof itself, I think, should be pretty much wide open.
So what you're saying is, any roof is what you're saying, right?
Pretty much, yeah. I just, I think if we, if we put it in a position where we're taking away, like I say, for me, I would get a third of my roof, and I have a north-facing house. If you've got a south-facing house, you could literally lose a hundred percent of the effective, you know, where, where the solar panels are going to be effective. So I just don't think that's probably the best choice to restrict it to the roof. Now, if you wanted to restrict it to only the primary building and not the accessories built, not the accessory buildings, that would make sense, maybe. But for me, I would think the roof is just, it's a wide open, because there's other, there's other language in here to, you know, to control pitch and all of that kind of stuff, so for me, it would, it would seem to be okay to just say, put it on the roof, that's fine. Jake has a question. If that's okay.
What do you mean? That particular section, I mean, and this is being voted on, it's a discussion, and I think just that everybody knows where I live, on Fairfield School, and it's good, that language, the way it is, good, I mean, because my house, front of my house is facing west, and south-facing side would be ninety degrees, which would also be all night open outdoors. So I have two car, I have two different garages, and I've considered, because they are south-facing, you get the most light, that it would be advantageous to look at it. But I would, I wouldn't put them anywhere that pleasant, if it wouldn't, if the shingle, not to protrude past the shingles, you might have done thought on it. Because if you do put certain language in there, you really would make, make it difficult, because you do, if you've got a house that's, like you said, south-facing, and there's the house up the street that I'm sure Lance knows which one I'm talking about, who has panels that are kind of strung all along the south side of his house, and no primary reason, so the language of, if you're, if you have to replace them, or whatever, then when replacing, I think that would make a lot of sense to keeping a continuity of community.
Yeah.
For what it's worth.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, I have one other. It's, uh, what's on the last, it's on the last sheet. It talks about decommissioning. Uh, D, if the owner fails to respond to a notice of decommission, or if after review by the city's building zoning inspectors determine that the solar energy system has been decommissioned or discontinued, the owner of the property upon which solar energy system is located shall remove the energy, the solar energy system, mounting equipment, and other above-ground structures at his owner's sole expense with ninety, within ninety days of receiving the notification of decommission. Where is the language that says, on the ninety-one day, you're going to jail? I mean, there, I don't see anything in there, and it may be in, in someplace else, but I don't see anything in here that says, if you don't do it, you're in trouble. It just says, you, you do it.
You can add that language to cites in the mayor's court, and you're going to have to create a new offense, because, Mark, it's this, potentially. And I'll look at our ordinances, see if we have anything that would cover it, you know, area to decommission the solar energy system. You know, again, I can put that in, but I think that's probably going to require us, it's not a bad idea, I suppose, to actually put some key, if you don't do it, you, just because you tell people you shall, doesn't mean they will. But, you know, if we create a new offense, then we could, you know, add to what mayor's court covers, I'm not saying you shouldn't, just understand that that step probably is going to lead to a couple more.
What about, thinking along those same lines, but without perhaps having to create another violation section, if there was a penalty of, a fine, that after a certain point enables us to place a lien, and then we could always pursue foreclosure action if they didn't pay their fines? Or giving us the ability to remove it at their cost and have that lien? Just something to consider. What's the path of least resistance, and, or, you know, what makes more sense for us as a city?
I'd be a little bit worried about, do we want to do it ourselves?
Yeah, taking those systems out.
Because that, that could lead to lawsuits, because you didn't do something right, or whatever.
Well, if it's ground mounted, won't be as difficult, but if somebody has a roof-mounted system and we start banking it off.
Yeah.
Will be important.
I would think something like, if it's, if you haven't, if it's not done within ninety days, then you're fined so much, and you'll continually be fined so much every month, or something like that, whatever it makes sense.
Per day fine, yes, daily fine.
That's fine, too, sure.
Could use to accrue, and, and then if we have the ability to file a lien, then we could file a foreclosure action.
Exactly, but just put a lien on the house, and, um, that's, sounds like it's not much, but when you start looking at the interest upon a lien, wow, it's big.
So, well, I did have a couple as well. Um, first was, I guess, one ninety-nine, twelve ninety-nine oh three, C. No application for zoning certificates shall be reviewed or issued until they have HOA permission. Do we have that anywhere else? Any other building permits that we issued?
I don't know if we do, but the subject has come up at one HOA already. So I thought, if there's HOAs, it wouldn't be a bad idea, a bad thought, if we don't have to take that out, and let the HOAs then regulate themselves.
I think that would be my preference, just because, doesn't it almost give us a duty now to know if that, if that home is in an HOA, or that?
No. No. I think what it now is, we're going to know that obviously, there aren't many HOAs, so we can wrap the number off, or, but, down the road, could there be more certain? You know, that goes right back to my point, every one of these new regulations, great laws, ordinances, chapters that we do, if we have inspection, somebody's got to do the inspection, and if we have permitting, somebody's going to be issuing the permits. So, you know, the regulation's great, but, you know, I guess one thing I would say that we need, we need to consider is, who's going to do all of it? And we can create a couple new positions for Lance to fill with all these inspections, and then force him.
Could we, could we just, with the application, have them submit, with the application, a letter or something from the HOA stating that it's been approved by them?
That would be my idea, would be exactly what we, yeah, that would be, please, go to the HOA, says it's okay, we would basically require them, guess, something from the HOA that says it's okay, and file it.
I mean, if we're going to do that, can't we keep it simpler and just put a checkbox, you have received permission from your HOA? Because it, doesn't it, it really, to me, this is just as, it, it's like, we don't do this for any other building requirement, for any other building permit, to say, did your HOA approve this? I don't think we necessarily need to do it here, either. It's between the homeowner and the HOA.
That's true.
Check on a box, you can check a box, anybody can check a box.
Right.
You know, without a letter, at least you made an attempt.
But it's their duty, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's their problem that they're violating their HOA requirements, it's not ours.
Which is, I kind of agree that, I wonder if we even need it.
That's, I mean, that's why I looked at it, I was like, do we, do we even want to go down that road, because again, we don't have it anywhere else.
I mean, we have our regulations, and they have theirs, and you, and if you want to do it in, in their HOA, it has to fit, or it doesn't fit.
That's, wait, in my HOA, uh, you've got to get any outbuilding shed or anything like that approved. But I can come to the city, and I can get a, I can get a permit.
Right.
Put a shed in, and go ahead and put the shed in. And if the HOA doesn't like it, now I fight with them. So this is basically the same thing, I guess, really.
It is. I mean, you know, we don't have to do it, we can take that out. I saw it, and I thought, that's interesting, because the subject has just come up with my HOA, and I thought, I'll go there and see what everybody thinks of it. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not married to anything in what I put together. My idea was, okay, all of you take the work out, and I'm all, I'm a little wide open to any suggestions, that can be removed. You know, the HOAs should approve or disapprove. Or, you know, people, anybody that wants to install a system should know if their HOA allows. You would think, if the HOA is active, then they're going to find out. But, you know, people will come and get a permit and say, well, it's okay, if you decide it's okay, without showing to their HOA.
I mean, I would, I would think, just as a general rule, our, our permitting process would include the ex, you know, the understanding that our permit does not supersede HOA requirements or deed restrictions.
So, again, if we have a permit application, you can put all of, you can put some of this in there, that way you don't always want the HOAs to do what you want. You're right, you aren't going to have the areas.
So, I, that's my preference, I, I don't think we need it, but.
I would agree with those points, because just the concern that it says, no application shall be reviewed or issued until the HOA permission, so if we grant something without knowing about the HOA, and then, I don't want the HOA coming back against the city saying, you issued this, and it's contrary to our rules, so, I don't know, could just open up the gray area, that if we don't really need it, then maybe just not have it cloudy, muddy the waters.
My next one is just a question under location, uh, item one C, ground-mounted solar energy systems may not be located closer to a street than any street-facing building facade. What is, what about alleys? Because, because if you've got a, you know, backyard that's got an alley behind it, um, now, and there's enough, there's no other building behind the house, then literally the solar system would have to be on the house, or else it wouldn't be allowed, right? Because that's the closest building to saw. And also, the same thing with side yards as well, because we do allow, this, this would allow them in side yards, but if there's a side yard with an alley, or, you know, a side, just a quarter lot, that's another question. I don't have an answer to what the right answer is, but that's just, those were the questions that caught my attention.
You're right. Again, um, how much do you want to regulate where somebody places? As you're right, we are in northeast Ohio, this is important, we don't have all those days of sunshine. So, are you going to pretty much allow it? That's going to be worthless for most people. I don't know that that's your idea, but, you know, I've looked at a lot of Ohio, I've looked at northeast Ohio, I've looked at all over the state, just to get an idea for what communities do.
Um, I'd like to hear other ideas on this, but I think, uh, just using the setback requirement, probably would be my preference, which is, they've got to meet setbacks. And then with the screening requirements as well, I think that would be sufficient, because, because otherwise, we'll end up with, you know, somebody who's got alleys on three sides of their property, or a street and two alleys, or whatever, that their property's basically worthless for solar panels.
Well, if you're going to put screening in, and you're going to put ground-mounted solar panels, what are you going to put, I mean, the, the solar panel's allowed to be fifteen feet high, what are you going to hustle the screening? I mean, you, you're blocking the sunlight in the winter.
Again, I put in the idea of ground mounted, but you don't have to allow them. You know, you have to lose some of those solar panels. It was funny, once I started looking at this, I thought that's where I'd see a lot of, then I started seeing more ground mounted, and I thought it was about, yeah, I'll throw them, moving through it out.
So I think ground-mounted is fine, it's just, you know, some of the, some of the language, it makes it very restrictive if we're not careful, if I would do it.
Well, it's going to be restrictive. Well, it's gonna be restrictive.
I mean.
It just is.
I mean overly restrictive.
I mean, I kinda like the idea of just roof mount. Now, I hear it, I, I kinda like that idea.
The, the ground mounted, and I'm just not familiar, just the proposed safety hazard, I mean, a lot of homes don't have fences in between, so, you know, what if kids or animals are running through? I don't know.
Unless they run into a solar panel, it's probably not a problem. But, okay, as a lawyer, is a solar panel going to be an attractive nuisance?
Yeah.
To a five year old?
What happens with a neighbor kid, boxes baseball?
Well, it's obviously gonna be a target for the, for a baseball. Yes, fire.
Yeah.
You know, those are all good questions. Like I said, I, I first thought, okay, I didn't want this, this is just my idea, that's why I grew as a ground mounted. Um, some communities are going all kinds of ground mounted and getting very specific in where and everything else. Some do whatever you want. Um, as I said, the, the restrictiveness and non-res, it's across the board. Kind of, as I've read through some of these, it's really, really looked at it, just, ah, we're gonna allow them everywhere. Wherever you want, just put it there.
The last thing I had was, uh, twelve ninety-nine oh-seven, uh, there's a lot of stuff in here. And I, I'm assuming that most of this isn't in our current permitting processes either. Uh, specifically, the one that caught my attention was the two foot contour map of the property. Uh, but there's a lot of stuff in here, I'm assuming there's not part of our normal building permit requirement. It seemed that, some of that seems a little bit excess, to me at least, feels a little bit excessive.
Here's what I think, one of the things I would caution you, if you're gonna have professional installers going inside, they're gonna actually map out for a home, those are the points. Now, planning commission sees, we say site plan, and I've looked at everything from looking like somebody drew on a napkin.
Exactly.
To something that's more formal. And frankly, from my standpoint, the napkin's not a great idea. It ought to be something that's on the scale, I'm not saying an architect has to do everything, but, you know, you've really gotta be able to see what it is that's going on.
Well, so I would, let me just kinda run through real quicks. Um, I would agree with the property lines and physical dimensions, that makes sense. Uh, the location of the existing structures, uh, location of the proposed system, uh, right away is fine, that would, the, those all do seem to be like, what I would expect to be normal requirements, is the two foot contours threw me off. Um, because, I mean, we happen to have two foot contours of a lot of our city, but most places probably don't. That would be, could be a prohibitive expense. Uh, overhead utility lines make sense, I think the stamp of professional engineer surveyor, I mean, I'm not sure. I certainly would need to have an engineer, because it's, it's a solar energy system, you would, I would, I would require an engineer. Uh, specification.
Somebody's gonna professionally put it in, are they engineered? Or are they just?
Installers, they're just installers, yeah.
But you would think, I mean, if, if I'm having somebody put a solar energy system on my property, I would want an engineer to look at it, make sure that it makes sense. I mean, roof mounted specifically, because it's, you wanna make sure that your roof could actually hold the weight of the, of the, of the system and all that kinda stuff, but even ground mounted. Um, and some of these others, I guess, they don't hurt my feelings. I, the one that, like I say, caught my attention was the two foot contours, I thought that was, that was odd.
And again, if you go just strictly roof mount, a lot of this is eliminated.
That's true.
Could you, I'm just spitballing, could you say something in here that says, uh, basically, any ground mounted system will be reviewed of its own merits?
There, but who's doing the reviewing?
Yeah.
And who's doing inspecting?
My concern with language like that is, I call those weasel words, what's that really named?
I'm not a lawyer.
I know. Well, what I can see is another lawyer, inverting it differently than I do, that's what lawsuits are made. Because if we tell one person, hey, it's okay, but then the next guy, like that, really, over the ground, it'll be this.
That would be personal preference, just because we're interested, we're looking at each one of them. Okay, I'm wrong.
So, I mean, with the engineer requirement, cause I'm also thinking, some of this, I think there's even a thing in here about having, you know, some stuff would have to be approved by the city engineer.
There is.
Uh, so do, does that kind of, it's like, and, and I guess with permitting, how much of, how much of what we permit, especially residential, has to be approved by the city engineer? I don't, either.
Yeah, those are all, I mean, all these points are good. And I probably put as much restriction as I could with the idea, you're all gonna look at it, you're gonna say, no, or yes, or we need to tweak it some more. So, you know, and then that falls under, who's gonna inspect, who's gonna permit? And how much do we want to set? Because if we ask our city engineers, hey, you guys have been approved every one of these, then our permit fees.
Well, should it be commercial and industrial property, solar that are, are, should the engineer inspect or, or okay's? Cause they're, you know, you're thinking, a large area of solar panels, whereas, you know, that would support that on a, a flat roof or something.
Again, I, I mean, I don't know how much the installers are going to look at the load of your house, your roof. I guess it's on a lot, because there's someone who says.
To me, that's on the homeowner. If, a, a, as a homeowner, if I'm gonna have somebody put something on my roof, I'm gonna make sure that we, yeah, that'll hold it. So that's me as, as a purely of the homeowner, so what would we want our engineer to look at? Um, you know, I, I think, I mean, if, if they've got engineer stand plans, that a, an electrical engineer, a structural engineer, whatever, have, have looked at it, approved these, I don't think we'd have any real need to have our engineer look at it, other than if there's something, I mean, I would, I can't even think of a reason we would. I mean, does it meet the setbacks? Do they have a site plan? All of that kinda stuff for sure. Oh, I just, I wouldn't think we would need to have our engineer necessarily look at it. Maybe if they're, if they're planning on selling their, their electricity back. Wait, you know, what would they require, if there's a requirement there, that it's gotta be compliant?
Yeah, it would be, you know, any, anytime something electrical is installed, the state inspector would have to inspect that. And that's what happens.
Okay, so it's, it's already covered. Uh, so, I mean, maybe I'm okay with this, we're just taking out the contour lights. I don't, I don't know that, what the value of that would be specifically. Uh, the others, this other stuff, I could see it, kind of see it. Uh, cause most of it's just a site plan anyway. Do we want to acquire a professionally drawn site plan? Rather, rather than something on the back of the napkin, maybe that's more looking forward.
You know, you brought up a very good point, which is, is the homeowner gonna have some responsibility here? Yeah, but how much responsibility do you want to put on the homeowner? To do something that looks great and doesn't irritate everybody else that lives on the street?
Well, number seven, it does say, the stamp of professional engineer surveyor indicating his or her preparation of site plan. So we would, from that.
Yeah, you're saying.
Which I think that protects the homeowner too, that you don't have some fly by night company, you know, getting on the bandwagon of, oh, we're gonna install the solar panels and just draw up this plan, and they're, they're not a professional engineer, and there might be an issue with the load on, on the house. So it's, you know, I would prefer to have the homeowner protected by requiring, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I kind of, well, I love this stuff, like, some of this, I started thinking about the early days of sad lights. The size of the sad lights, and anybody who installed the sad lights wherever. You had some monstrosities sitting on roofs, and you just wondered, is the roof going to collapse? There, there was no engineer, there was no anybody, just anybody with a sad light sitting there. So, you know, do we wanna prevent? Can solar energy be as, you know, as, you know, that type of system? Hopefully not, but I don't as, you know, personally know enough to know who's gonna be the installers. So what I looked at was the idea of requiring an engineer, might be something that protects everybody else from somebody that just wants to take the shortest, you know, the, the shortcut and the cheapest way to do it.
Which is going to be very complex.
Yeah, especially in residential, commercial, industrial, that's different. But in residential, you know, that's to me where you want to make sure there are guidelines.
Um, sorry, for me to take out the two foot contours, I could live with the rest of it. Um, and then, do, you know, do we wanna talk about roof mounted versus ground mounted? Do we, do we wanna make it roof mounted only? I'm okay with ground mounted, but I'm one sixth of the votes here, so, that's everything I've got, so.
Thank you. Good, this is a suggestion.
We appreciate the input.
Do you have a ground mounted? And this is the same theory I had when we, years ago, when we were talking about the duplex, is restricted based on lot size. So if you say, you gotta, you know, if you're gonna have ground mounted, you gotta have this much, this big of a lot to allow ground mounting. That would have given you the room and that versus anybody in town. There's some really small lots in town that they try to ground mount, they're nearly impossible. And I think that kind of puts the restriction there. It's very restricted, but restricted enough that you're not sitting there trying to go through this brick and roll, should or will or want it work. And takes a little bit of that pressure off. That's just a thought.
Just so you know, okay, under the final.
Thanks, Jake.
Care about under, um, twelve ninety-nine point oh-six, box about lot coverage, hold on, solar system shall be covered with the lot coverage. How does it, so, just, just stay on that. So that is basically, you know, we're talking about accessory use. The point I just made probably, you know, kind of flows under that.
But we don't really have any lot coverage requirements right now, right?
You can look at some of those setbacks, I guess some of the other things as far as how much, you know, buildings covered in a lot, on a lot.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's specifically setbacks, there's nothing that says, you can only have fifty percent coverage on a lot or anything like that.
No.
So that.
That, that clause would need to be further defined.
Well, or we would have to, we would have to act.
Put something else to the, to, to, yeah, the idea was, okay, there's something that we didn't want to eliminate. Then you could actually almost eliminate being able to do a ground mounted because of that.
So I have a recommendation. Did you wanna try to work up something based on what we've been talking about? And I can run this fire city engineer, see if we're asking any crazy.
Yeah.
And then the next step would be to come back and you, you know, look at your changes, and then you would give this to planning commission? They're gonna get it, and then it would be back to council.
I might be leaning toward Ted with the roof mounted only.
Yeah.
Well, now that would be something that the planning commission could go back and recommend.
Yeah. So.
I just have a feeling that the ground mounted might cause more problems than.
I think roof mount eliminates a lot of the, what the problem could be.
Well, yeah, I mean, roof mounted, basically, it's allowed to be on your roof, and the, you know, it could only be three feet from or whatever. I think it takes probably eighty percent of these restrictions out, because we would talk about it.
And it, it, it may eliminate some people totally, but, sorry.
Sound like a plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, plan.
No problem with that. Okay. We are going to have an executive session on tonight, discussion of collective bargaining matters, section one, two, one dot two, two, G four. And there won't be any action after, okay? Any comments? We've got all the comments from the, yeah. Any comments from out there? Council comments? I have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Dan.
Deanna?
Yes.
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to commodity executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Dan.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Deanna?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.